I am going today.
Well, good evening Cedar Falls. Welcome to our regular city council meeting for Monday, March 21st, 2022. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Gannfield.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any, excuse me, for approval of minutes, is there a motion to approve the regular meeting of March 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that does pass. And Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have a typo on item 17 on the resolution calendar. The amount should be $286,395.50. Materials in the council packet were correct.
Okay, so it was listed right on the council packet itself, so we're just changing that title in there. So with that, I have two special presentations tonight, the first being recognizing tomorrow, March 22nd, as Meals, or March for Meals Day, and then second for March 30th as Honeybee Day. I'll read both of those. I did have a Zoom call with the two folks who received the proclamations. They weren't able to attend tonight, so I'll post that video to social media tomorrow. But for, let's see, for the first as March for Meals Day, it states, whereas 50 years ago, on March 22nd, 1972, the Older Americans Act of 1965 was amended to establish a national nutrition program for seniors age 60 and older, and whereas, the March for Meals Campaign was established in March 2002 to recognize the importance of the Older American Act's Nutritions Programs through meals served in senior centers like here, and meals delivered to the homes of elders, and to raise awareness about the problems of senior hunger and isolation. And whereas, the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging, NEI-3A, is a nonprofit serving under the Older Americans Act to provide services to older Americans that help them age in place with dignity and independence. And whereas, the thousands of volunteers who deliver Meals on Wheels to homebound seniors here in Cedar Falls and beyond are the backbone of the program and are worthy of recognition as they provide nutritious meals and compassionate contact to seniors and others who would otherwise risk daily hunger and isolation. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim March 22nd, 2022, as the 50th anniversary of the March for Meals in Cedar Falls, and I urge every citizen to celebrate our Meals on Wheels program and the seniors they serve and the volunteers who care for them to combat senior hunger and isolation, as well as to promote elder dignity and well-being. Sign this 15th day of March 2022, Mayor Robert M. Green. I did have a chance today to ride along with Andy Malone and a board member from the NEI-3A on, with Meals on Wheels up in North Cedar, and you should see that in the Courier next couple of days, right? Okay, so write up of that. The second I have is Honeybee Day, which is March 30th, 2022. Whereas honeybees and native insects are important pollinators for a third of the food we eat and are vital for the production of over 90 crops grown nationally, including here in Iowa, and whereas Iowa's 45,000-plus honeybee hives produce 4 million pounds of honey valued at over $8 million and provide an estimated $92 million in crop value annually through their pollination. And whereas, more than 4,500 Iowa beekeepers, ranging from hobbyists to full-time professionals, are passionately managing bees, from one to two hives in a single apiary to thousands of hives in large commercial operations across the state. And whereas, the state of Iowa maintains an active apiary program to protect honeybees and beekeepers by inspecting for apiary diseases and pests and by encouraging best practices through outreach to individual beekeepers and beekeeping groups. And whereas, honeybees face global threats from invasive pests and disease, colony collapse, reduction in bee-friendly habitats, climate change, and deadly herbicides and pesticides. And whereas, the city of Cedar Falls is committed to providing nourishment and sustainable habitats to bees and other pollinators through native prairie plantings and through reductions in the use of pesticides and herbicides on city property. Now therefore, I, Robert M. Green, Mayor of Cedar Falls, hereby proclaim March 30th, 2022, as Honeybee Day in the city of Cedar Falls, and I encourage citizens to take part in the Iowa Honey Producers Association Celebration of Honeybees through enjoyment of honey and other products of the hive. And I do further encourage all citizens, businesses, and other organizations to help reduce the threats to honeybee survival in Iowa through advocacy and direct action. Sign this 11th day of March, 2022, Mayor Robert M. Green. I had a video talk with Edward St. John, who is with the Iowa Honey Producers Association today, and we'll post that to social media as well. He gave a fascinating account of what's happening with honeybee populations, not just here in Iowa, but in, across the nation and the world, and the real threat to the survival of honeybees that we're dealing with today. It's such an important aspect that I didn't really appreciate before, recently, about just how much honeybees play a part in agricultural economy. Governor Reynolds issued a statewide proclamation for March 30th, and there will be an event at the Capitol that morning, and certainly would encourage everyone to learn more about bees and other pollinators. And I celebrate the work of council and of city staff on helping to improve native prairie habitats in our city. And as we see some conversion of city property over to native habitats, we're invested in that at the city and certainly want to promote private efforts in that as well. So with that, that takes us out of special presentations and over into public forum, where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. So does anyone from the public wish to speak on an item tonight? Mr. Fairbanks, please.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive.
Evening, Mr. Fairbanks.
I sent a letter to each of the council people and mayor about the previous work session that was had, and I'd like council people to look at it and check the links out and seriously consider not doing the vinyl restriction. There's compromise there. You couldn't make it in the one area that you're trying to make, which is the Main Street. I don't think anybody's opposed to that. But regular citizens, have they asked for this? Have the people in the surrounding neighbors demanded this? I haven't seen it. And if the question is developers know what to do, I think developers do know what to do. They have a set of guidelines that works, and we tend to want to change them all the time so the developer cannot decide what they're going to build. As for ADUs, I think they're an okay idea. But to put restrictions on them so hard that a homeowner can't do what they want to with their own property, it's not feasible. It's not reasonable. There are property rights that are here, and people bought property expecting it to be the way it is, and when you change it, their opportunities are gone. They may have intended something that will not be in this zoning. So they are harmed. But consider those things when you do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. Ms. Beach, name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Rosemary Beach, Western Home, 5018 Sage Road. I want to thank you for having this evening and having the university come. It's an excellent idea. And I would thank Kelly Dunn specifically, if I may say so, for bringing that up and for you taking on the opportunity to do that. There's a lot of stuff we've never talked about before when you get the two of us together, the old town and gown, which has always been part of Cedar Falls' history. And what I wanted to bring to, forth to you, have all of you have this marvelous magazine? Okay, hopefully you do or have picked one up. And I think our tourism bureaus just do an excellent job of putting these together and selling the whole area. When you get yours and really look at it, read page four here down at the bottom, the timeline, because it's kind of interesting. One of the things is 1876. A former orphanage which cared for the children of Civil War veterans was converted into a teachers' training college known as the Iowa State Normal School. Then you get down a little ways, and it says, in 1967, what was the Iowa State Normal School expands beyond training teachers to become a school of more than 10,000 students and 90 academic programs now known as the University of Northern Iowa. I read that to you, and I believe it, and I believe that we are the home of you and I. And I appreciate Michael coming and both those gentlemen coming and talking about what their problems are. Yeah, it's hard to run a university with millions and millions of dollars. But my hope is that the elderly house can be saved and made into a small museum welcome center. It's in a perfect spot on College Hill. You just take a little land over here and put a couple of car parking spots that they're going to have open space if they tear it down, but if we could save that. So here comes mom and her kid, and they have on the front, "Welcome. This is the Welcome Center for College Hill." It's a beautiful house. The porch is all glassed in. You can put all kinds of artifacts or pictures. The whole main floor could be a miniature museum timeline for you and I. And also in it, you could have things like this, brochures that mom can take home so she can read about where she's sending her kid off to school. It's a usable, usable building. It can be made into something that's really going to be unique for you and I, and I highly wish and hope that something like that could happen. I think that tearing it down is not a good idea, and you couldn't build a welcome center for that kind of money anyway. So thank you. I hope you take it to heart and think about having a place to go when you come into town for your people to come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Anyone else wish to speak in public forum? Seeing none, and we have, okay, so seeing none, then I will consider the public forum closed here and bring us over to old business, which item four is passing ordinance 3006, amending chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to increasing parking ratios for residential mixed-use and multi-unit buildings in the downtown character district to .75 parking spaces per bedroom, but not less than one parking space per unit as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission upon its second consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, open for council discussion. Seeing none, any from the public? Okay, last call for the council. All right, so it's been motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Harding.
Aye.
Gannfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that takes us over to our consent calendar, where these items will be acted upon by a voice vote in a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member wish to pull an item from five to 10?
Number six, please.
Number six, okay. Any others? Okay, seeing none for the public as well. Okay, seeing none there. So I'll read those items minus number six. Item five is approving recommendation of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. I think Crystal Ford for her continued service on the Civil Service Commission. Item seven is receiving and filing committee of the whole minutes for March 7th relative to the infiltration, inflow, and reduction program. Eight is receiving and filing the work session minutes for March 7th, 2022, relative to the continuation of the public safety model discussion. And item nine is receiving and filing communication from the city administrator relative to the appointment of an acting public safety director. And item 10 is approving applications for beer permits and liquor licenses. Is there a motion to approve those items minus six?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so those do pass, and that brings us back to item six, which is receiving and filing the city council committee of the whole minutes of February 8th, 2022, relative to the review of the FY '23 budget. Is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, open for discussion. Councilman Sires.
Yes, I have a quick question for Jennifer Rodenbeck on this, just a little clarification. As I was going through the hospital funds, it's under other funds in our packet here. Yeah, it's called other funds. I found it interesting that the interest income to the hospital in FY '20 was $460,000, and then the actual in that year was $153,000, and that was interest income. So if you looked at it as 1% money market, or whatever you want to call it, that would be a downgrade of $30 million. Now, if you're getting 2%, it'd be half that, which is 15 million. So then I went to the next one, which is 22, budgeted was $366,000, and yet the actual projected was $173,000. So then from there, it goes down to FY '23, which is $145,000, and then it kind of rolled in at the same number, $150,000. So my question is, how did we drop from interest income of $460,000 down to $153? That's my curiosity. I kept dwelling at me, and this is where I thought would be the best time to...
And I would note too...
This about the minutes?
Yeah, this is about the minutes themselves.
I understand. It was just a clarification.
But still, I mean, I'll leave it up to council. I don't want to open the door of always being able to debate items that were talked about in minutes.
Pertinent question, maybe, but not for this item. So due to the law, I don't know that we're allowed...
Is councilmember Sires questioning the accuracy? Maybe there could be some mistake there that you're asking about?
It could be. It doesn't make sense to me how we could lose that much money, because if that's showing interest income...
A mistake in the minutes. That's not in the minutes?
I mean, it doesn't refer to the hospital fund in the minutes.
Doesn't it refer to the budget that we're going to approve as the budget?
The budget's already approved.
Receive and file the minutes of the budget?
Unless there's a question about the accuracy of the minutes, I'm sorry, it's out of order. I thought maybe...
I can ask it at the end.
Under updates, would that be appropriate?
Okay, that's fine. I'll ask it then.
Okay. I appreciate your consideration on that. So anything else for the minutes itself, the accuracy of the minutes? Seeing none, then it's been motion and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that does pass as well, and takes us over to the resolution calendar, where these items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the council or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item 11 through 20 for discussion? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone from the gallery wish to pull an item 11 through 20 for separate discussion? We're always happy to talk. Okay, seeing none, then I'll read those items. Item 11 is resolution approving and recommending, or the recommendation of the acting public safety director and the city administrator relative to the appointment of an acting police chief. Item 12 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a master service agreement with IP pathways for data backup and disaster recovery services. 13 is approving and authorizing execution of a home investment program agreement with the city of Waterloo for FY '23 to '25. 14 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of three service product agreements relative to the removal of hazardous trees on private property and authorizing the city operations and maintenance division manager to approve individual property quotes. Item 15 is a resolution approving the certificate of completion and accepting the work of Peterson Contractors for the West 12th Street Reconstruction Project and approving and authorizing transfer of funds from the Street Construction Fund to the Street Improvement Fund. Item 16 is a resolution approving and accepting the contract and bond of Peterson Contractors, Inc. for the 2022 street construction project. Item 17 was amended, so it's resolution receiving and filing the bids and approving and accepting the low bid of Municipal Pipe Tool Company in the amount of $286,395.50. Is that correct? Okay. For the 2022 CDBG Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. 18 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a revised owner purchase agreement and approving and accepting a warranty deed in conjunction with the Olive Street Box Culvert Project. 19 is a resolution receiving and filing and setting April 4th, 2022, as the date of public hearing on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the College Hill Parking Lot Improvements Project. And then finally, 20 is a resolution setting April 4th, 2022, as the date of a public hearing on proposed amendment to chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to principal permitted uses in the M1 Light Industrial District. Is there a motion to approve these items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and this requires a roll call vote.
Harding.
Aye.
Gannfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Over to ordinances, we have for 21, passing an ordinance amending chapter seven, building and building regulations of the Code of Ordinances relative to discharge of stormwater or groundwater into the city sanitary sewer system upon its first consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and since this is the first time it's coming forward, we have Mike Nyman available to talk with us tonight, just for that 30-second infomercial of what this project is about.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an update to our ordinance that applies to the removal of footing drains and sump pumps from entering the sanitary sewer system to help eliminate sanitary sewer overflows and backups into homes. So this just eliminates the qualifier of when the home was built.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nyman. So yeah, we had a presentation on that in our last, was it the March 7th Committee of the Whole? So if anybody's interested in learning more about that, especially in the Cedar Heights area, that's a great time to look at that. This will be up for its first consideration, and since it's an ordinance change, it'll take two more readings before it becomes passed as law. And my understanding is the primary difference is there's not an exemption for pre-1969 houses?
That's correct.
Okay. So any questions from council on this or comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sires.
My question is, when we discussed this, it was just for that area, and then there was a $4,000 rebate they could get if they hooked their... So if this covers the whole city and not just that area, will everybody else then be entitled to that $4,000 to upgrade? Because that's kind of important, because it could be a tremendous amount of money if you do the smoke tests into the manholes and they come out the eaves and all those kinds of problems. If you're really trying to hunt this stuff, it concerns me for the people that aren't in that area, and it'd be nice for everyone to be able to get that money, that rebate money if they hook on.
I think there's...
I can take that. So, so as you recall, in the previous committee meeting, there was kind of a schedule outline that we'll have these three readings, and then at the second meeting in April, I believe, we'll bring forward that policy that we talked about at the committee meeting, which relates to the reimbursement, the areas that we will be so-called targeting, and those areas are only related to our reconstruction of our streets. So it doesn't pertain to everyone at this time, but if we come to a place where we have problematic I and I, and we are rebuilding the streets in that area, then that's when we will address the I and I issues.
So I have your word on that?
It will be as part of the policy that comes forward in the second meeting in April.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nyman. So any other questions or comments? Any from the public here? I'm seeing none, so it's been motion and seconded to pass the ordinance amending chapter seven, building and building regulations of the Code of Ordinances relative to the discharge of stormwater or groundwater into the city sanitary sewer system upon its first consideration. Motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Harding.
Aye.
Gannfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us over to bills and claims. Is there a motion to allow bills and claims for March 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, motion and seconded, requires a roll call vote.
Harding.
Aye.
Gannfield.
Aye.
Sires.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Schultz.
Aye.
DeBoer.
Aye.
Cruz.
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that takes us over to city council referrals. Do we have any referrals to bring forward tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman DeBoer.
For our earlier discussion on vinyl siding, I'd like to ask that we refer back to planning and zoning option two, which was adding an allowance for vinyl siding on all single-family dwellings.
Okay, so option...
All new houses.
Grab my sheet here for that. Okay, so option two, does council know what that is? As Councilwoman DeBoer discussed...
They put it up on the slide.
Yeah, do we have that ability? Make sure we know what we're talking about.
I'll second it, just...
It was in our packet.
Yeah, motion is...
I know.
Found it again.
Did you repeat that? I cut out there item number three under the options for vinyl siding. Is that what you want, Susan?
I did option two, which, first, which was to add the allowance for vinyl siding on all new houses.
New, new single-family dwellings.
Any house.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have it as a motion... Okay, so I have it as a motion and seconded, second to refer to planning and zoning option two from the slide, slide 12, add an allowance for vinyl siding on any new SF dwelling. So it's open for discussion, since it's been motioned and seconded.
I don't see...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz.
I guess I like that as a first step, but when you have twin homes or dual flats or duplexes, that would require them to have brick, wood, or some other material. I guess I'd like to see number three, which is essentially what we had or have in the rest of the city, just keeping the downtown area prohibition against vinyl. The rest of the city do it as item three shows. But if I have to amend that, or Susan wants to amend that, it's up to her.
The only reason I didn't take three was because of the buildings with seven units or six units. You know, I don't have any problem with the duplex townhouse or small. But I thought seven was getting kind of large.
Councilwoman Harding?
Would it be pertinent, if we're going to refer it back to P&amp;Z, to just be broader and refer back both options and have them discuss it?
Sure.
So I would make a motion to amend to send back both two and three.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so motioned, so a second for that amendment? And...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If Councilmember DeBoer is okay with that amended referral, do we need to change with a amending motion?
That's true.
Or are you kindly amending?
Yes, it's fine.
Yeah, just refer back number two and three.
Okay. So if, yeah, just consider that a withdrawal and then bringing forward option two and three as a referral to Planning and Zoning Commission. So is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. So any discussion on sending those two items back to Planning and Zoning? Those two options?
Just because I believe in the power of planning and zoning, I'll go along with it. So let them talk about it.
Okay. So it's been motioned and seconded to have the referral sent to Planning and Zoning for consideration of options two and three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that does pass, so that will go back to Planning and Zoning for consideration. Any other referrals tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sires.
We decided we'd look into the PSO program and the two traditional departments. And I found a place through a couple of ex-police chiefs, friends of mine, and they're out of Wisconsin. And they'd be very good and perfect for what we're looking for. Probably run between 50 and 100,000 for the kind of scope we're looking for. The name of it is Community Security Solutions LLC. And there's three ex-police chiefs. One of them, they have quite extensive resumes that are perfect for us. The one of them was in charge...
Well, before we get too much into the details of it, do you have a referral you wish to bring forward?
I do. I'd like to hire this firm to do our work on what we had all agreed on, that we would have somebody look into this. And that's my referral. I'd like to have these guys do it. And that's where it stops.
Okay. So for something that's a cost item, it would have to be approved by council and be on the agenda. But for a referral, how can we have this as a valid referral? Send it to staff to obtain additional information and bring back to the council the costs? I know we're looking at several, so I don't want to commit us to just one at this point. So any insights there, Mr. Gaines or Mr. Rogers?
Well, I'll take a stab at it, and then I'll turn it over to Attorney Rogers. But I think the first thing that we need to determine is, is there a budget item? We don't have any budgeted items right now that explains between 50 and 100,000 for this. So I think it has to boil down to one or two things. Is this going to be something that we're looking at for a budget amendment and finding that money? Or are we taking something out of the budget that we've already approved? So I know we made some significant cuts with the budget. So where are we finding the money, I guess? That would be one. Another one is, are we sure that we know what the scope of this study is? Because since the last meeting, I think I've heard eight different types of what this scope is actually going to be about. And so not knowing what the scope is, how do we know that this is the best firm without sending out an RFP?
Yeah.
Those are some of the hurdles that I see.
Okay.
Yeah, I would add, there could be a referral to staff. But staff has to know what the scope of the project is in order to even get information from a prospective vendor. And I think there would have to be an RFP to get competitive quotes on. I'm like this according to city's policies, if we're talking about that kind of money. So I don't know that we can limit it to one vendor, potential vendor, at this point in time.
Yeah, so I... Unless council objects, I'd have to view that as out of order for the one company to go with. But would there be an interest from council in having a work session to discuss what the parameters would be? I feel like we need to know what we want to have that group do before we can actually send out bids or requests. But it's up to the council to decide.
It's not, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, please.
It's not so much low bid, because we don't take low bid on our audit. I want the best people for the job. I want somebody that can come in here and really look objectively. And we're going to have to go a ways away so that they haven't been tarnished by either side. I'm very sportsmanlike. Gil talked to them on the phone today. Didn't you, Gil?
I did.
And didn't you seem satisfied?
They sounded to be very objective and have a background in both models, if you will, in traditional fire and traditional police, as well as the public safety model, and have done this work in the past. You know, it was a pretty targeted, short conversation, 10, 15 minutes. But yeah, they sounded pretty competent, and their resumes are pretty, very impressive as well on the group. I guess I'm with what the mayor was talking about regarding, how do we determine what that scope is? And if it's a work session or, you know, or a community input, however we come up with it, I do believe we need to have a scope, not just a blanket, hey, how's our model? What do you think of it?
And we have to have the money to do it.
All right, so pleasure to the council. Looking to see what our next step is to honor the intent or the desire of Councilmember Sires, but to do it in a proper legal fashion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Sires?
It was four people who voted to have this. And to have an outside firm come in, that was the last, at the last meeting.
Well, consensus.
Right.
There was no vote.
Okay.
But yeah, to have that, sure, to honor the consensus of council, to have an outside group. The question is, the detail that Mr. Gaines is looking for, and as Councilmember Schultz alluded to there, or talked about, what that scope is going to be of that project is really important, to see what we commit to and what kind of contract we sign with whatever company does this.
So in order to know how, I mean, Kelly raises a good point. You have to have the money to pay for it. So, but you don't know how much it costs unless you understand what the scope is. So you got to start somewhere. You got to get a scope and then get, you know, RFP, right? And then figure out what the costs are, and then figure out how you pay for it. So the only logical order to go in is to first have some sort of session on what the scope is going to entail, and then take the next steps. And I would like to include this company as an option to look at. But before we know the scope, we can't really keep moving, so I guess...
How'd you feel about a referral to staff for a Committee of the Whole presentation on what the recommendation would be for the scope? And then council can modify that at the meeting. You can amend it, add items, remove items. But I would want us to have something to start from.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I believe this should be up to the council. I don't, I think that's for the council to decide. The council holds the power.
Of course. But the staff does recommend to us items. And if the council, we could have this, the council discuss it in a work session.
But then you don't get any public input. So if you did a Committee of the Whole, there could be options. We could add options, we could modify options, and then people could speak, and we could add those options. So I wouldn't see there being a negative to staff recommending what they want and then us modifying or adding.
So for the rest of council?
I agree with Simon. I believe we have to have input from the community, because that's what got us to this point in the first place, that each of us individually and as a group, hearing from the community on wanting to understand, first off, the model, and then doing a comparative with what we've going to stay with or what we've done in the past. So I think it's important to have a community input.
Okay, so if we're not moving forward with referral to have one company approved tonight, then I'll need a motion or a referral for either a Committee of the Whole presentation or something that can then be seconded.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What are we asking staff to come up, come with? I'm just confused. What are we asking them to come with?
That would be part of what happens after the referral. Like, I don't want to have a much further discussion unless...
We're not asking them for anything yet.
Oh, I thought, okay, I thought that was what he just said, was we were asking the staff to come with. Okay. So at this point, we're just, the discussion is to come up with what the scope is of this third-party audit or whatever we're calling it. Is, that's what we're trying to...
We need some motion forward at this point.
All right, well, then I'll make a referral to Committee of the Whole to talk about the scope of the, the scope of the public safety review.
Okay, a third-party?
Yes, third-party.
Talk about the scope of the third-party review. So that's what's on the floor. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, so motion and second to refer to Committee of the Whole, the scope of the third-party review.
So I have a question. So we did have a consensus, like Dave said. Is this, is this the most efficient way forward, I guess? I don't know if that's for staff, or if we have a consensus, what do you, you know, do you guys need this as a next step to make it, you know, push towards it? Or did you have other ideas in mind as the next step?
Well, tagging on with Councilmember Dunn's comment is really needing to know what the scope is and what, you know, what do you want us to come back with for a draft or, you know? Because I'm pretty sure I can look at different council members up there and think that this study is going to represent different things. There could be somebody looking at the study to say, hey, we wanted to evaluate to see if we tear apart the police and fire. Or there's comments that I heard is, oh, we just want to go ahead and find out what's, have them look at the program and offer suggestions for some tweaks. So those are two totally different scopes.
And they need clarification on city's staff side in order to even just create an RFP. So I wouldn't want to prejudge the outcome and say, oh, this company is going to get the work, and we gear our questions around what company can offer that. I think we really need to stay open to what...
And this is just out of curiosity. The scope could have some broad subjects in it, but would we not want to defer to the expertise of whichever people we hire as to looking at it neutrally and seeing what they see and what they, the facts and what they recommend? So I don't know that I want to micromanage the third-party company that we have. So I guess my, my thought is to have a broad scope, to just come in and look and get, make a, you know, look at everything, talk to employees. I mean, we can, we don't need to go down the road of what, but broad, I guess, I would say.
And that actually is part of the discussion within the Committee of the Whole. If this is approved, like, what does that look like? Is it broad? Is it narrow? What's on the floor now is referring to Committee of the Whole to consider the scope of the third-party review, right?
Fair.
So...
Mr. Mayor?
Just whether we do it or not is what we're looking at at this point.
I guess I'm going to think out loud on amendment potential to this referral. But I'd like to have, at that Committee of the Whole, staff come with potential funding sources up to $125,000 for an audit. And then at that Committee of the Whole, rather than identifying the scope, selecting from a few, up to five outside audit firms, so that we can have some options to pick from, some potential funding sources. And then from that, have them draft an RFP with limited scope. I think to Simon's point, to Councilman Harding's point, to be able to have a fair analysis. We don't say, here's the data we're looking for. We say, we want you to come in and give us the data you're experts in. So to define the scope ahead of time, we might be house-blind to something that we didn't know we should be looking at. An outside firm that does this all the time should come in and say, hey, here's something you needed to look at, and you didn't know you needed to look at. So I'd be less in favor, so my, of looking at defining scope and more selecting an audit entity to do it. So I guess my amendment request would be something to the effect of coming up with potential funding sources up to $125,000, finding a source for that, so direct staff to do that for that Committee of the Whole. And then council and staff coming with up to five entities to choose from.
I think that would be more efficient, so I will withdraw my amendment and...
Well, you had the original motion.
Oh, that's what I meant, withdraw my motion. My apologies, so...
Motion's withdrawn. Councilmember Gannfield, do you want to bring forward a motion?
I'd like to refer to a Committee of the Whole meeting to have a presentation on possible funding sources up to $125,000 and up to, well, no, up to, at least three audit or consultancy firms to perform our public safety audit.
Second.
So motion is to refer to Committee of the Whole, possible funding sources up to $125,000 and at least three, what was the last part?
At least three public safety consultancy firms to select from.
Firms. Okay, so...
Including, I should ask in there, including Community Security Services LLC.
Okay.
Would it be okay if we had them come down? I know they're in Wisconsin. And they could give a presentation to us? I think you guys would all feel very much comfortable after you talked...
I'd want to make it even between the three firms.
I think that would be part of the RFP response eventually, if we were going to select from three different ones. Once we find the funding sources, to be able to then do further research. And we may be able to narrow that down more quickly in that Committee of the Whole. But I think that gets us a point to be able to say we have the funding sources for it from somewhere, and then be able to take action on it. If we were to have any entity present, we should have invited, we would invite all to this Committee of the Whole in some fashion, so...
Just to make it fair.
Okay. I'm open to that as well. I just don't know how to phrase that in the motion.
Okay.
I have no expectations, one side or another. Everyone knows I'm for two separate departments. But when it comes to this, I want it fair and impartial. And that's just the way I am. I am. People that know.
I think we all do, Counselor Sires.
Know I'm sportsmanlike, and that's, that's all.
Okay, understood. So the referral that's on the floor, um, now, Councilmember, I, let's see, Councilmember Gannfield, you kind of amended your own, I call it a friendly amendment, if that's all right, um, to refer to Committee of the Whole, possible funding sources up to $125,000 and at least three consulting firms, including Community Safety Solutions, is that what?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and I think that's, that's reasonable, as long as others are, are optioned as well. Um, so is that, was that seconded already?
I'll second it.
Okay, Harding's seconded. Any further discussion on it? Okay, so it's been motioned.
I got a question.
Yes, Councilmember, uh, Cruz, go ahead.
Uh, you mentioned having presentations. Is that standard, or has it ever been standard, where we pick three firms and then they give presentations in front of the council, or in front of the public, I guess you'd say? Um, or do you do that behind the scenes, or? I'm just wondering, because I don't, I'm not aware of that ever happening, where we get competing firms coming in and try to, uh, pitch themselves to us.
Is there any, uh, precedent for that or any concerns, Mr. Rogers, for the legality of doing that, or from?
There's no legal issue there.
Okay.
I can tell you from a standard practice, I mean, whether it's choosing banking, whether it's choosing engineer consultants, whether it's choosing, you know, planning projects we've had, I mean, it's pretty normal that we would have an RFP, we would go through, um, a selection process, oftentimes have the top ones come in for an interview as part of that process. So to answer Councilman Cruz's question, it's pretty common practice as it relates to, um, sta, those presentations being given to staff or whatever committee is choosing a firm.
And in this case, I, I would be leery of, of having anyone but the seven members of council in that, to make that decision and to hear the presentation, so.
Would those presentations be at a council session or a Committee of the Whole, or would they be, uh, mid-week, I'd say, or some other time, other than Monday's meetings?
To be determined.
Yeah, I think that's in some details we would work out if this, you know, as we go.
Yeah, we'd want to make it work for the most number, hopefully all council members to, to attend and participate, um, so.
But we got to see if the referral passes first.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilmember DeBoer.
Of, of staff, um, would it be more beneficial, instead of doing this kind of a review, to instead have our own employees look at their recommendations on anything that might need to be changed or, or anything that they recommend? It'd obviously be a lot cheaper.
I think that question is moot, because the council has already had the consensus to have the external review, regardless of what the staff feels about it. Want to make sure I'm honoring the, the wishes of the council.
Unless that, that might be something that is relevant in their decision as to whether they want an outside review. We never voted on it.
Well, we kind of are right now with the referral, so.
Okay, so with that, any other, uh, discussion for the referral itself, how we move forward with it? Okay, so motion and seconded, um, referrals are roll call, so, or, um, voice vote, so, uh, I'll read it again. This is a referral to Committee of the Whole, possible funding sources of up to $125,000 and at least three, um, consulting firms, including Community Safety Solutions. Um, yeah, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so it does seem to be a clear aye. Um, just to be on the safe side, I'll, I'll do a show of hands, uh, for all in favor, say, or raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. Opposed? One, two, and then Councilmember Cruz, opposed?
I was an aye.
You were an aye? Okay, so that's, uh, what, five, three?
Five, two.
Yeah, five, two. So that does pass, and, uh, cleans out that, that referral. So any other referrals tonight? Is, seeing none, is, okay, seeing no other referrals, I'll open it for, uh, council updates.
Mr. Mayor?
Do we have any updates tonight? Councilmember Sires?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Kevin Tegmeyer, 43 years he worked for the city of Cedar Falls. Uh, he was in Public Works. I think that speaks a lot for a guy like him that sticks around for 43 years. That's, that's amazing to me. Uh, congratulations on his retirement. My next thing, I have one more, uh, was my question on the hospital for Jennifer Rodenbeck, and it just, it struck me out of the blue when I was reading this stuff, how, how the interest income had changed from 460,000, and then the actual was 153, and then it trimmed off down to now 150 and 160. And the interesting thing was it was budgeted at 366, but yet only came in actual at 173. And that, is that the sartori fund that was depleted by that much? Because at 1%, it would be 30 million, and at 2% earning, it would be 15 million.
Okay, so, um, on the interest, well, first of all, you always have to remember when you do budget and actual, we set our budget 18 months ahead of, so we're always forecasting and predicting, so that's always tough in itself. But as it relates to the hospital, the interest income is two things. It's what we're earning on our certificates of deposit and the internal loan that we have to the sewer fund that we did, um, I think back in 2017. So there's two things that compromise the interest in the hospital fund. And so without having all the background detail is, and what makes up those numbers is, obviously, interest rates have gone down, but what I also have to remember is in 2020, when we sold bonds, um, we got extremely low interest on those bonds, and what we always do is then be consistent with our internal loans. We do, you know, a consistent internal rate to be fair. And so the council would have passed a resolution actually decreasing that rate substantially, that sewer funds paying on those loans, um, they're paying back to the hospital fund. And those, those actually are pretty significant. Those are millions of dollars that those internal loans are. So again, without having the, all the detailed numbers, because I didn't know the question was going to be asked, I, I mean, I can't give you the breakdown between the CDs and the loans, but the loans are the significant portion of what causes the interest income in the hospital fund.
So the city can borrow from that hospital fund?
The sewer fund, the enter, because it's an enterprise fund, was able to borrow money from the hospital fund, health trust fund.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other, uh, council updates tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I'd like to make a quick update. Uh, Rosemary Beach has been speaking pretty regularly, and we had an opportunity to speak with, uh, you and I, President Nook, and he did mention just some options and some openness, uh, to work with members of the public to potentially save the Sealy House, but obviously he was, uh, very concerned about the cost that it would require to maintain the building. Um, just as an update, then, it was, if memory serves, it was like 1.3 million dollars in rehab that was needed for the building, and it was less than 300,000 to raise the building. They weren't saying it's a done deal, but as we heard from, uh, Mr. Hager tonight, it's been tabled. Um, but they are open to members of the public, talking to them about creative ideas such as potentially a museum or, you know, any other purposes, uh, for leasing the building or even moving it if that were possible. So I just wanted to give that update that we did, uh, talked with them, but also just provide an update that it's not really in our purvey to say the building stays or the building goes. It's nothing that this council can do about it besides come alongside our citizenry and advocate for them and with them, so that's the only update I had.
It is really important, and we, we appreciate that this is a state jurisdiction item, even though, uh, someone mentioned earlier tonight, well, they're in city limits. Well, they're inside the bounds of the city limits, but they have an entirely separate, uh, legal authority, and it's not, we, we need to be careful about staying in our lane as a, as a city, uh, as, as, you know, Councilman Gansville's point of, of coming alongside, certainly wish to do that, to support and to, uh, if we can provide resources or help, we certainly would be interested in doing that, but, uh, primarily it's going to have to be some very creative thinking to, to retain those buildings. So, any other thoughts or, uh, updates from council? Okay, seeing none. Uh, staff updates tonight, Ron? Anything you want to pass?
Sir.
Okay, um, want to congratulate, um, Acting Public Safety Director Bertie on your, um, appointment, or temporary appointment, uh, during this process of hiring our new police, or, uh, Public Safety Director, and then, uh, along with that, as we saw on the council pack tonight, uh, Mark Howard is our acting police chief, uh, during this process as well. So congratulations to both of you, and city's in very good hands.
Thank you, John.
With that, uh, I will ask for a motion to move us to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded, um, and I should note too, as executive session to discuss property acquisition per Iowa Code 21.5, to discuss purchase or sale of real estate where premature disclosure may be reasonably expected to increase the price of the incremental body would have to, or the governmental body would have to pay, or reduce the price that the government could receive for that property. So it's been motion and seconded and requires a roll call vote. Aye.
Gannfield?
Aye.
Sires?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
DeBoer?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so for housekeeping, we will be moving over to the library's conference room upstairs, uh, as a council and, and for, uh, the staff involved in this. Um, this room will be, remain open. We'll come back here at the end. Is that how we're going to do it? Do we need to physically come back in here? Okay, so we'll come back in here at the end just to adjourn. So this is all really for the public part of the meeting tonight. Uh, you're welcome to stay and sit and watch us adjourn if you want to, but you might have better uses of your time. So we will, uh, uh, move over to executive session and be back soon.